Now.
All the ones.
Says the slides are really good.
Charlie says slideshow is great and pool was well done.
Okay, can I get just one's attention quickly? We're gonna start in about five minutes with the Q and A. So how we're gonna do, folks, how we're gonna do the question and answer it is we're we're challenged because of our friend, Councilman Hope. And we can only have 50 people in the room at any given time. And right now, if you look around, we have 50 good folks from all over here in the room. So we're capped at how many we can let in. We have another session at six o'clock that's gonna run till roughly eight. It's just, it's gonna be a repeat of this afternoon. It's not a separate session. So the question and answer, what we ask you to do, we wanna make sure we get everyone's questions here, because we have limited time. We have to wrap up by five, get ready for six o'clock. But we will go over if we have to go over, answer your questions as best we can, because we know there's lots of questions. So Councilman Bob Evans is up there. We all know Bob. Bob's gonna be sort of the moderator. If you have any questions, see Bob. Ask, have the question presented to Bob. Ask the question. You'll get it on the sheet. And if you wanted it, direct it to the panel up here. There's myself, Evan, there's Bill Miller from Habitat for Humanity, and Avini representing the community health care and the rural healthcare delivery component of this, of this proposed facility. So that'll be the panel. Avini, Bill, and myself will try our best to answer all your questions. If at the end, all the questions are done. Um, I have no problem accepting questions from the floor, because we wanna make sure that you have all the answers before we leave. For those that wanna join us tonight at six and do a retake, there'll probably be different questions with the same concept. Feel free to join us, but please remember, we're only capped at 50. I believe we're live. We're going Zoom as well. Yeah, we're on Zoom, so if you have to go, and you got nothing better to do tonight, there's nothing on NBC or CBC. You can zoom in, and we will be on, live on your television or your computer. So, uh, what's CNN? CNN, no, no, Steve, ask CNN. So, so, uh, just have that in the back of mind, make sure your questions get the thought, and then we can start. So with that, I hope everyone had a chance to go around and see what we have presented in terms of a cursory review of all the different things we're looking to build in downtown Sycamore, which is quite frankly, very exciting, but it comes with a lot of questions and concerns. We're here to listen. We're here to listen. I'm not here to pitch this. I'm not here to sit here and say, this is the way it's gonna be. I know better than that. I'm not elected. Okay, I'm a good listener. I promise to listen. That's why we're doing this, because I realized the community was confused with some of the things that have happened, and there's a lot of questions, so that's why we're here. So with that, if I can ask Bill and Avini to come join me, we'll get the old rodeo going. Yeah.
Have you, have you? I have not, Bill.
So you're just gonna go and bring the microphone over while we're done. Make sure anyone can hear. Okay, let's start.
Check, 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 okay, it's working. Good mic. Good afternoon, folks. I've written down a whole bunch of questions, and like Evan said, you can bring me more. There is a buttload of Post-it notes on those tables over there. Do you wanna write it down, or you can come over and ask me while they're answering? Yeah, I will write down any questions. In my, I took them in scratch. So, here we go. First question. Okay. How are we going to connect the rail trail to Main Street? Would that be a question to you, Evan?
I love delegating. Can I delegate that to Councilman McHale or not? You can reject it. Okay, sure. Because this is a portfolio that Councilman McHale is involved in. I'll, I'll, uh, refer to Melton. Thank you.
Can everyone hear?
I'll, I'll talk loud. So I think everybody can hear me. Sorry for not covering my mouth, I'm steady. Yeah, so transportation is one of my portfolios as council, and on the first term, we're trying to get the, uh, the Brum Bridge to have a car bridge again to Main Street. Minister of Transportation decided, uh, they had two options at the end. They're from six down to two, and one was a five-lane bridge on TransCanada, or a four-lane bridge with a car bridge on Main Street. So they went dark for about 14 months, and then when they sent us all postcards just before Christmas, December 18th, said, okay, we've chosen the five-bridge option, but now it's gonna be a five-lane bridge on TransCanada, but now it's four-lane. Okay, well, can we at least have a pedestrian bridge at Main Street to connect our rail trail? And he said, no, it's outside of scope of the project as well. Yet the federal minister here in town, a year back, standing in the council chamber, saying that he's willing to fund either project, a car bridge on Main Street or five lanes on the highway, but they said, no, it's outside of the scope. So as, 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 with that as my portfolio, I've been striving to have a pedestrian bridge at the end of Main Street. But while we're working towards that, before you can get funding for that, you have to have a master plan for your trail system. And we didn't have that, so we applied for a grant to get a master plan done, $50,000. We were just recently awarded that. So once we get our master plan together, then we can start applying for funding to help public engagement for a pedestrian bridge at the end of Main Street to connect to the trail. In the meantime, our staff have been working very closely with Ministry of Transportation on the Brum Bridge project, which is now a four-lane bridge. But they're gonna have, uh, not just a sidewalk, but a pathway that's three meters wide on the, on the, on, on Brum Bridge. It's gonna be separated with, uh, eight, 10 guard rail, like the higher median guard rail. And it's gonna go from the west end of the bridge down and connect on true, onto the rail trail. So that's all included in the scope and cost of the Brum Bridge project. So once they tender that, we're thinking next spring, maybe they'll go to tender on that. PC Hydro's doing some work right now. That's the work we see right now. So in the long term, I hope that we have a pedestrian bridge at the end of Main Street that brings foot and cyclists down to Main. In the meantime, uh, there's accommodations in the Brum Bridge design, accommodate a pathway that goes across the bridge and connects to the rail trail at the, at the ministry's expense as part of the scope of the Brum Bridge project.
Thank you. Yes. Sure, you answered. Thank you. Okay, question number two. Okay, question number two.
Why are we not using Finless in place for a medical center? Why are we not using that for a medical service as we already looked?
Thank you.
This is on, this is on. Great question. I've been asked that at my emails and phone calls. Um as you know, folks, in twenty seventeen, council purchased two-one-seven Finlesson. Two-one fin- two-one-seven Finlesson used to be the B Stone Building. Okay, when the district purchased it, um we were surprised to learn that roughly fifty-five, not a fifty-five hundred square feet on the uh ground floor and fifty-five hundred square feet on the second floor makes up eleven thousand square feet. Less than three thousand square feet was the Sycamore's Medical Clinic. The rest of the tenants, uh as you know, most of you know, there's a dentist in there at the time there was a optometrist, uh there was physiotherapy, and then upstairs, there's a digital res. There is is a high-speed internet cover and there's uh there was a yoga studio that was run by uh Georgina Kilo. And so there were other tenants. So even though we wanna move and build a brand-new community health center, we can't displace those current tenants in the current building. What we're hoping to do, because the building's paid for, there's no debt on it. The building remains in the ownership of the folks, the people of this community. We're hoping to transition that building into either community space where we can have children's programs, recreation space, or maybe even better job creation, work with the dev corp, bring in other businesses to fill that space. The other option is we could sell it. But right now, we're in desperate need of community space and we don't wanna take away the existing tenants, the private companies that are in there. Most of them in the dentist office. Moving dental equipment is very expensive. It's an intensive operation to move that expensive equipment and we have promised them we wanna leave them there for at least five years before they determine if they wanna move with us to our new facility. In addition to that, um this the parcel size is is limited in space when you look at parking and we've done some preliminary estimates with a new building, plus we wanna incorporate green space and park space in the new building. We just don't have the space. So the the short answer is we've got other uses delegated for that building, primarily commercial, primarily um dentistry and uh recreation community space.
Okay. What do you envision to be the um variety of occupants in the new wellness center and healing center? What would be therapists, doctors, dentists, counselors? Can you elaborate on who the uh the main tenants would be in our healing center?
I'll take that one. So to add to uh Evan's last answer also, it would be very difficult for the community to shut down the current community health center, right? If it were to be raised at the current site and a new site built there, you'd have to go probably a year or more with no health services. We don't want that for you and your community. So in a proposed new building, we would move your existing medical providers, family medicine primarily, um in addition, your support staff. But a community health center is really designed as a one-stop shop for health services that's owned by the community. It's not a private physician's office. We envision that mental behavioral health services, peer support, uh some other therapeutic programs could be, you know, you have a caregiver in your family who needs some respite and or support. You may have been discharged from the hospital or a family member's discharged from the hospital. So you could go to the health center, get support for that, be able to have some triage and maybe even some referrals. We envision in a future um development addition of things like pediatric services, women's health, prenatal care, geriatric services and specialties, lab services. So there's a a range of things that would be nice to have, can't fit into your current community health center today, but could be under the auspices of a community health center and the and the healing environment. In addition to that, there are others that could lease space or join as tenants. Um we talked about having the optometrist, uh having some hearing services, potentially expanded dental services. Could have a a pod for visiting specialists, telemedicine, really the, you know, the sky is the limit. What eventually goes into that building has to address unmet need in the community as identified by all of you. So that's where the priority comes, is the community members share what are the priorities and what are the needs.
Yeah, just to add to that, uh this is a huge endeavor that council has taken on. Because as most folks know, healthcare is a provincial responsibility. You know, B C Health operates hospitals. They work with different partners. Uh we all know the Vernon Hospital. We all know Samnar Hospital. I think most of us understand with interior health, the region provides the area. It's a large area. Municipalities don't run healthcare. Okay, this is a very bold move that council's made and it's all because of securing and retaining our doctors. And that was really the primary reason council decided to do something. We knew we would not receive funding from I H A to build a publicly funded clinic just for residents of Sycamore. That's not what I H A does. So we made a hard look at this. Council looked at the different options and rather than losing our private clinic upon the retirement of Jack Beach, council made a strategic priority to purchase Finless in place, purchase the existing uh private clinic just prior to Jack's retirement and open up in June of this year as a community health center, which is owned and operated by the the taxpayers, the district of Sycamore. You know, we have doctors on payroll now. And that's a big, bold move and it's all about keeping healthcare and primary healthcare and services in our community. And a lot of people have asked, you know, give that back to the province. If we do that, we have to shut down the health center and wait for the province to build us something, which we know they won't. We've asked them. Go to Samnar, go to Vernon, there's services elsewhere. It's called a catchment area and they've got their own protocols and rules. So with this community health center, we didn't want another private clinic coming because there were no private clinic buyers to purchase the clinic from Jack and Brown Beach. It was closing. So that was the reason council started in twenty seventeen on this journey called Community Health Center.
All right, another question. I've heard that this would be a rehab facility for drug addiction. Is this true?
Uh yeah, that's another question we've been asked. Um I know that paper called me in Eagle Valley News, did an article on it. Um the best way I can uh answer that is the following. The answer is an emphatic no. Um treatment facilities, addiction centers, places where people need a place to go and stay. Uh they can stay anywhere from three nights to three weeks to three months. That service primarily is provided by the private sector. You have to have kitchen facilities. Okay, you have to have accommodations. You have to have beds. That's not what this facility we're building has. We don't have kitchen facilities nor do we have beds. Okay, the only bed we have is for outpatient services. You come in, you see a physician, it's no different than a clinic now, but you're not staying overnight. In addition, treatment center is basically a facility that's inpatient that requires overnight accommodation and that's offered by the private sector. We're not gonna compete with that. That's not what we're proposing to build. First Nations Health Authority, which is a separate body from the Interior Health Authority, we've also been working with them, hoping to bring them to the table on this whole truth and reconciliation work in the splats and which we'll get into later. They also run treatment addiction centers funded by the province and their own internal services. There's one in Armstrong. There is a addiction center, there's two in Samnar. Um we wouldn't even be eligible to qualify because we don't have kitchen facilities and we don't have accommodations designed in our new community health center. You wanna add anything?
One of the things that um will be a support is that triage and referral piece. So many of us, most of us and our families are touched by things like alcohol, you know, substance issues, mental health, you know, behavioral health issues. So having a central place that is your medical home, your patient-centered home, to be able to get support for those issues is an absolute benefit to the community. So that's that's the nuance there because these things are are a part of our lives. The direct services are not, this is not a facility licensed for those direct services. But we do wanna offer support and triage and referral for any of our community members who are either suffering or have a family member, community member that needs help. Um this becomes a gathering place. It becomes a one-stop shop that's convenient. You don't have to get in your car and drive thirty to forty-five minutes to be able to ask someone for help or support.
Okay.
Well, sorry, sorry. You get a special favor here, Steve.
Do you want the money?
Is this?
Yeah.
Could we move really quickly?
Sure.
Or quicker if maybe we have a little bit of participation with the questions and the answers. Because I know that some of them are going to give. So if I can comment on the statements, that would be good if anybody else wants to.
Yes, Steve, I've got, I I I'm making sure that there's no repeats. That's why I've got all those correct questions. Okay, so then we can't comment there?
Well, we like to run through the questions, but if if you wanna just ask a quick question specific to that question, go ahead.
I I'd like to ask why in that application, the mention services are mentioned in the application that the district made. In essence, the district's goal is once again today that no, there's no addiction services being offered, but the doctor there says, yes, they will be. But we we need to have, but do you need clarification on that if we're gonna have? You're not asking someone to visit the doctor, the psychologist for ten minutes, but it's addiction case. It could be totally out of their mind for the next twenty-four hours. So is that going to attract things like that or is it?
The the short answer is what I mentioned before. In our broader community, if if you look at the numbers, seventy percent of individuals over the course of a lifetime will have a behavioral health and potentially an issue around, let's call it substances, right? When when the grant applications are submitted, that addiction services is a general term that's around what I described, triage and referral. Direct services is a very different thing. It's it's a very specialized licensure for which you, you know, this community health center would not qualify. Does that help answer that?
The answer is yes, then it will be, my correct.
The yes. The answer is any licensed healthcare professional in managing a patient has to ask those questions. You've probably been in your annual visit where your provider says, how many drinks do you have a day? You know, do you take any medication? Do you use any substances? That that is considered addressing addiction. So but that isn't a detox facility. That isn't the other pieces that have been described, I think, uh you know, by community members. It's really important to address that distinction because the specialized addiction and inpatient detox services are what I believe many community members are concerned about and maybe even afraid of because the scope is intense. That's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is primary care, a medical home for your community members. Whole person care, mind, body, spirit.
One of the things I learned just to end on that question, since we've opened our community health center in Sycamore, the physicians I work for, all of us, that's one of the primary things that they're dealing with. There there is addiction problems right here in Sycamore right now and it's serious. We deal with that. But as a referral triage, we refer them and and that that will not change, Steve. And I and I thank you for that question because that is a question that people have asked point-blank to me, will it change the makeup of downtown Sycamore? We're a tourist community. We welcome people all over the world to this beautiful area called the Shushwab. Do we want to be having a treatment addiction center in downtown Sycamore? It's a it's a valid question and that's why it's important for us to hold this meeting and distinguish between what Dr. Avini talks about, which is the referral triage and referral especially where we see patients right now and we refer them if they need additional counseling overnight state, treatment addition elsewhere. Thank you.
I will ask the next question. I often hear that we need Main Street to be the heart of our tourism-based economy and that we must carefully plan how this is developed to help us keep improving our communities. Is this at odds with using Main Street real estate for housing, healthcare, and what about Finless or other areas? So um let's break it down. Couple of questions. Um is the use of use of Main Street real estate for housing and healthcare uh contradicts uh our need to keep Main Street as a tourism-based? Then I have another one.
Sure, I'll just I'll just start and maybe, I don't know, Bill wants to chime in or others, but uh any small community.
And then could you just repeat the question into the microphone?
For the folks online?
Please, if you don't mind.
Okay, uh the question basically was um what is the district doing in terms of developing their downtown and 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 the relationship of housing and how is housing incorporated?
Is it gonna contradict tourism?
Is it will it contradict tourism? Thank you. So that's the question. Um tourism is our bread and butter. We all know that, whether it's the houseboats in the summer, whether it's the sleds in the winter and all the other acti- activity in between. There's there's motocross, there's there's active and passive recreation. The downtown is the jewel of any community. We want to bring wallets into the downtown. We want businesses to be open twelve months a year, not four months a year. So how do you do that? You know, any planner, any good planner will tell you what you try to do is you've all heard the term work, live and play. You wanna put people in the downtown. The major cities have people in the downtown. You don't need a car. You walk. You've got park space, green space, you've got trails. We don't want you depending on an automobile and it's, you know, density and intensity, maximize your density in the downtown area. On Main Street, we can't have all housing, but right now we've got a mix of um R four, R five, R one, residential one, single-family homes. We had a couple of derelict buildings. What we're trying to do is bring more people to the downtown, sort of develop a business base. Residential usually commercial follows. If you put commercial, usually residential follows. That's what we're trying to do with the proposed development with our partner Habitat for Humanity. In terms of tourism, it's all about enhancing businesses. Again, we don't want them open just June, July, August, September. We want them open year-round. And you do that by bringing the number, which I believe in my thirty years' experience, and I'm sure Fred over here, my friend Fred, retired C A O will tell you, the magic number in a small town is about five thousand. Five thousand people. It it almost runs itself. The services are funded by the tax base. When you're below five thousand, it's very difficult to fund services. You're either borrowing or waiting for grants, which is where we're at. Our population increases in the summer tremendously, but in terms of permanent taxpayers, you wanna get to that sweet spot between four and five thousand ideally with good planning and you wanna bring people to the downtown. So that's what we're focusing on with this housing crisis facing the country. We want good housing. We don't want poor housing. And we don't want a shady development and we don't want shoddy construction. And that's why we've made it um a passion of ours to find the right partner to bring affordable attainable housing, which we believe we found with with Bill and his group. It's brought bringing people downtown, supporting the businesses. Um in addition to that, when you bring people, you have to have parks and you have to have trails and you need community space when you do that. So we do have plans to do all of that with Eagle Valley and Habitat for Humanity. We have plans to en- uh enhance park space at two-hundred Main, but it already is. The pedestrian bridge crossing, looking up to the rail trail, et cetera, et cetera, to feed the need of the tourists. I mean, we all want them concentrated downtown. So we have that that, you know, that commercial base that services the residents and the tourists twelve months. So we have that, that, you know, that commercial base, the services, the residents and the tourists, twelve months a year. Do you want to add anything, Bill?
I think maybe just minor observation is, and when we look at the planning of a community, it's changed over the years. Uh, I remember years back where there was the segregation of services. The multifamily housing had to be over here and the single family, low-density had to be over there and commercial was here and with industrials over there. It's all changed now. A lot of the planning now is based on livable, walkable communities. And in particular, in a small community like, like, uh, Sicamous, we're looking at making that an integrated community. So we're bringing the housing part of the downtown. We're mixing our project with some main floor, we have commercial and then maybe service providers. And the, the residential area can be whether it's homeownership or it's rental or it may be housing for the workforce that works in that downtown core area. So you are still servicing your first sector. And you're, you're doing it more with an integrated, uh, living community. So all of your amenities and facilities can be easily accessible by all of the incoming tourists, but also the, also the residents that you have there too. So you're servicing both sectors. And I think you're fine that, that as it develops, it's going to be a very good, good community and you will stand out from others.
Thank you. Yeah, no, good point. Uh, what's the number? Is it five thousand? Five thousand? So great question. At, at the population of five thousand, that's why we keep it at four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight. And there's communities that have done that, see Beachland. They've actually done that. They light on their senses. That's a fact. Hello, Beachland. Um, at five thousand, we go from, is it ten percent to fifty or seventy-five percent? In terms of R C M P policing. I think it's seventy-five percent if I recall. So yeah, you gotta be afraid of growth pressures because that's when the province stops providing free policing to communities under five thousand currently. And the taxpayers have to step up and pay seventy-five percent of policing after that threshold number. So that's another thing we have to be cognizant about. We can't put nine hundred units of housing and have an explosion. You will have more taxes to pay that bill, but that's a reality and thank you for bringing that up.
We have a lot of questions, so.
Yeah, I know. I'm getting long-winded. Sorry, sorry.
It's four o'clock and, uh, this is.
Thank you, thank you.
So here we go. Um, the next question is, why did we switch the medical clinic from Main Street across from Askew's to two hundred Main?
That, that must be Mary.
That was.
That is three people, Mary. No, I, I, I bring, I, I bring up Mary because we talked about that just before. I'm just kidding. Fantastic question. Folks, it's simple. We had a, a groundbreaking ceremony in July of twenty twenty. I know most saw it. It was online. It's when we celebrated the partnership with Splatsey to build the healing center at what I call four one seven, four two five, which is the property right across from Askew's. That was the plan. We were going to work with Eagle Valley. Rona's here today. She's the chair of the society. Yoamo Rona Martin from Mary E. We've been working on this now, Rona, for three, four years. That was the plan. It was at the last minute that the gentleman to my right met with the municipality after a failed attempt to do a development and energy, pitched the plan to bring attainable housing, affordable housing to Sicamous. The way to keep the cost down was the district gift the land or entertain a possible partnership down the road where that development could be either run by us in the development court or Habitat for Humanity. So we had to come up with land. That's when it was switched and that's when we released in public that we would like to sit down with Habitat for Humanity to put the fifty-eight units proposed commercial development on Main Street, four one seven, four two five, and move the healing center, preserving half of two hundred Main Park and put the building back to the east side and build this healing center. That's it. And it was done literally in August of twenty twenty-one. It was released publicly and trust me, folks, I heard from everybody. My email lit up. I don't do Twitter because I'm over fifty, but I got a lot of, lot of people saying, why did you change direction? You haven't explained it to us. And I may be, I may be right, we haven't. I'm not suggesting it's the perfect move. We're trying to save both projects. We're trying to save the healing center. We're trying to save the hap- Habitat for Humanity development because affordable housing is paralyzing our workers and our seniors and our low-income learners in this community. There's nowhere to rent. You know that, and so that's what we're trying to do. That's why we switched sites. Thank you.
And, and I'll just ask, I'll elaborate on your question as you were asking. Um, is this just going to be a professional building that's taking away business from existing landlords? Um, or is it going to be dedicated at the medical center? Like, you tested it?
You mean the, the, the new proposed health center? Will it take away from existing businesses? Like, will it be a professional building? Basically, it's going to be a community health center. It's going to be owned and operated by us. It's going to focus on health and healing, both indigenous, non-indigenous. There'll be no commercial in it. No commercial. We, we can't rent space to the private sector. Why? Because that would break the agreement we have with the federal provincial government for funding. So they provided us six million dollars to build this. We can't have commercial space in the healing center. Which businesses are those? We, we're only bringing in healthcare services. We, if, if there's room and there's a market for additional physiotherapy, yes, we'll talk to those folks. We're not going to chase it, but if someone comes to us and they want to bring allied healthcare and additional healthcare services, that's what our new facility is for. How do we pay for the capital or the operating? The operating right now is paid by us. The district of Sicamous is covering the cost. Well, how it works right now, and I can't talk about the future, but just simply right now, in our first year, there's going to be a deficit and that's paid by the taxpayers to keep healthcare in Sicamous. What we do is we have an eighty-twenty split with the physicians. So what we do is we bill the province for doctor's time. We, we keep twenty percent to pay the operating costs and eighty percent goes back to the physician. As we grow and get additional physicians, more revenues, if we can bring in other healthcare providers, even though they're private, I just want to make sure when I say no private, I mean no Starbucks, no, you know what I mean, no non-healthcare. But if it's a healthcare provider that says, hey, I'd like to take space, we will lease that space. That will drive revenues to help pay for it. We're also looking at potential operating, um, funders, whether it's working with First Nations Health Authority, working with I H A, getting our healthcare center sanctioned where some operating dollars can flow into this new building moving forward. Steve?
My question here goes a little bit long with this. How can the, the district justify the maintenance costs moving forward of the building to staff? Where are you going to house the people? How are you going to get physiotherapists here and addiction counselors to come to this community? What are you having to house before? I think the charge is getting pretty much higher. I, I'm completely against the location of the center. I approve the development. Whole part of it, I think whole part of it is wonderful. I'm against downtown core completely being used for affordable houses. Built thousands of units. Not good location to have that. We need it, but we, where are you going to put the doctors? We have trouble getting doctors to come here as a result. How are you going, those history would justify filling all those holes of professional. And who's going to pay for that moving forward? Who's going to maintain that? Are you going to have to be white elephant to sit in?
No, no, not under my watch. No, 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 we're not going to have a white elephant. No, well, one of the, no, no, I hear you. I hear you, Steve. One, one of the reasons that we're excited about Habitat for Humanity, I thought at first it was just attainable houses. I thought what, what Eagle Valley and the district's been working on is subsidized housing, focusing on seniors, focusing on people with physical disabilities, veterans, low-income families. What Habitat has, and I can have Bill speak on it, is a mix-up. So some of the doctors can hopefully take one of those units. It's not just for those that are below the market in terms of their ability to pay. It's a mixed use and that's what makes Habitat proposal exciting. That a physician or anyone else can live in, it was in a nice unit in the downtown. The reason we chose the downtown, it's land we own. How do you keep a housing development attractive in costs when the land costs on top of the capital cost for a for-profit organization puts the housing out of place for a lot of people that want to purchase or rent a home? So Bill, did you want to talk about the mixed use a little bit?
Just adding that, so what I was talking about is, uh, when we, when we originally looked at this design, it was, it was, uh, at the request of the Endo Legion, and we developed for them what we call a real estate asset management model to operate this facility where there were sufficient revenues to cover the operating costs of having a project. It's designed to be mixed residential, mixed residential, commercial. So the main floor is commercial retail. Uh, there's, right now, there's a number of spaces on that floor. It could be for professionals. It could be for retail elements. It could be for Starbucks, whatever. So there's an opportunity there. The upper four floors, the way it's designed right now, are residential. And they are a mix of unit sizes from one bedrooms to three bedrooms. Now, we have the flexibility at this point of turning that into a completely stratified building and selling all units to, to, uh, at market rates to the, to the people that are coming in. We can mix use it with affordable or we don't call it affordable anymore. We call it attainable. So that we can provide a model for people to actually be able to afford a mortgage payment if they choose to live in that particular facility. So on a homeownership model can be strat-titled. It can be, uh, full-floor retail based on fair market values. And it can be, uh, fair market value with, uh, some financial assistance for the, for those with more moderate income. Alternatively, we could turn the whole thing into a rental building. We are at the preliminary design and conceptual stage. We, we spent a year and a half designing this facility for a downtown, a small community downtown core. And we think we've wrapped in a, a number of things that will benefit, uh, the, the community, the workforce in the community, the tourism. And we will be able to accommodate, uh, a mixture of those, of those needs. So we're in a conceptual stage. We're having this meeting to present these ideas to you. We, we will come back through a number of iterations. Designer, we have some flexibility at this point. The concept is mixed residential, commercial for a downtown core. And we have a very professional architectural firm that, that came up with the design. They're known all over the country. They work closely with and other funders. So the design as it sits right now is specifically for a small community. So admin housing and a, and the downtown core commercial. And it answered the question that gentleman about who's paying the bills. This is self-sustained. Pays the bills from its own revenue.
Thanks, Bill. Okay.
Okay, moving on. We, uh, have a question here. Is D O S, uh, willing to allow residents to vote on the development of two hundred Main Street?
Yeah, that, that's a council decision. Not an, an parliament decision. I'm not elected. I work with council. Uh, that's a council decision. And that's something that the, the folks can ask council, whether it's a referendum, it's a it's an informal survey, it's a poll, um, it's an alternative approval process, but that's a question for council.
Yes. The question that was asked was, is the model that was designed by Habitat for Entropy, um, has it been done anywhere else? He, he, here's, I'll just give you a short version of me. This is my forty-seventh year doing this. I'm not reinventing any rules. We bring to the people we work with proven models that work. And we designed this one in, uh, specifically for the Endo Legion because they were going broke. So we came up with a, a mixed unit or a mixed opportunity for residential, commercial that would generate revenues. It's a model that's been used all over North America. It's nothing that, it's just designed specifically for that particular end user. So a model applies and where you want to put it is, you know, it's entirely flexible.
I would just add one thing to that. From the standpoint of recruitment and retention, I think Steve over here had some questions around that for the health center. A lot of your young professionals are not high-income earners. They come out with some education, some debt, um, difficulty finding attainable housing. This is an opportunity to recruit some of those emerging professionals and their families. Bring them into your community, have those services at the ready for you here without having to drive thirty to forty-five minutes and then retain them. And that then will help you attract additional services like the pediatrics, the women's health, the geriatric services that we talked about. So there are sweet spots for all of that demand and need. And the center's being designed not so that you outgrow it the day you move in, but so that it, it grows with the community and the needs of the community.
Um, to what Dr. Abin just said? No. Okay, um.
Can we get you at the end? We just got to get through these.
We got to answer people's questions. Hang on to that. Can you write it down?
It's just that people are waiting for their questions to be asked, that's all.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. Okay, here we go. Who owns the dental office across from Askew's?
Doctor Bruce Goff, this.
Okay.
Proca, Proca Test.
Doctor Proca Test.
Sorry, Bruce. Privately help. Great dentist.
What happens to the, um, land across from Askew's now? What is the plan for that whole property?
Very quickly, um, on the map back there, uh, where am I? Right behind Council on the cave. What we have is a, make sure you get this right, Evan. Don't be welcome. Two and a half acres total, two and a half acres total of D O S lands. Nestled against, adjacent to Eagle Valley Communities, uh, Senior Citizens Housing Society. They run the Haven, the Lodge, the Manor, the drop-in, the drop-in center is part of this whole, what I call precinctive care, if you will, this area. Eagle Valley has its own land right beside here. Eagle Valley has given up some of their land for twenty units of seniors housing led by Rona's team. The district has given up an acre of shared land to provide sixteen units of housing. In addition, the district will provide an acre and a half, correct? Get the numbers right, to Habitat for Humanity or an acre roughly? Acre, shared parking. So in short, Habitat, Eagle Valley, park space, D O S lands, Eagle Valley lands centered around what we call this area, sort of this precinct of care. So we're putting housing with housing, proposing putting housing with housing on Main Street adjacent to the Eagle Valley Development in a partnership with Eagle Valley.
Thank you. Why are we not building the healing center on a different lot in town?
Short answer, cost. Right now, in twenty fifteen, a council purchased two hundred Main for five hundred fifty thousand. In twenty seventeen, we purchased Fennel's Place for six hundred and ninety thousand. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we purchased four one seven, four two five and half of four three three, the back end of Bruce's property for the two of just over nine hundred and some thousand. Those were all funded internally, no debt. Cash that Kelly was able to find. That land was earmarked for what we're talking about here today to acquire any more. To acquire any more land requires debt financing or a donation from someone. We've looked at all kinds of land on Finlayson. I spent two years on that on that on that area. It's all privately held, very difficult to acquire. We'd have to go and borrow money for purchasing additional land to find the home for the healing center, the community health center, or a home for Habitat for Humanity, and we're trying to keep their project down. So we're just we're just out of land other than going into debt. We still have some debt on other municipal projects, infrastructure. We're just trying to keep the debt. Can we go and ask the people to borrow more money to buy land? Council can, yes. There is some room to incur more debt to buy land. We can, but I know it's this council's mandate to keep the taxes very low. Every forty-five thousand dollars we borrow, every forty-five thousand we spend is one percent increase in taxes. So if you buy land at four hundred fifty thousand for a lot, that's a ten percent tax hit if you want to pay it in one year. Five percent over two, five percent each year over two years, et cetera, et cetera. So the short answer is cost.
Thanks. Most Sycamore's residents do not want to pay for the upkeep of the regional healing center. Must have done a poll. Why has the D O S signed up Sycamore's taxpayers for all costs of maintenance for regional healing center? Does it allow them to import?
So right now, we just opened in June two thousand twenty-one. Right now, we're the only major funder because it was about maintaining and keeping our rural healthcare. So council made a conscious decision to use internal uh revenue sources, grants and monies that we had to help co- uh fund on an operational level the community health center moving forward. With the new facility, and I'm talking about two one seven, our current facility, when I say our cost to fund the existing community health center. Our new facility, we know we're going to be the major contributor, but we also have plans to lobby I H A to make our facility sanctioned, eligible for operating dollars. We want to talk to the regional area about contributing to this medical clinic, this community health center, because it serves the entire region. We want to take, we want to talk to First Nations Health Authority, Interior Health Authority, and other contributors. So ideally, we can break even. The more doctors we hire and the more people that visit, called the patient panel. We're right now just under two thousand. We want to get it to three thousand. We want people from Salmon Arm coming. That drives revenues, and hopefully, long-term, this facility goes into the black. We government don't want to be running this. The plan is we're going to create a foundation, a a community health foundation, a non-for-profit society made up of experts in healthcare moving forward down the road for them to operate and run with the different funding partners. That's the plan.
If you if you juxtapose communities of your size with no infrastructure around healthcare, no physicians embedded in the community, there's a major effect on health outcomes, safety, and the like. So this is an investment in retaining the current medical providers that you have and that safety factor. Um, I'm looking at several of you who have conditions that you live with that you manage every day. If the the closest place for help is thirty to forty-five minutes away, that that is a challenge. So this investment in the short term is going to continue to help develop your health infrastructure for the community for decades to come. Now, the, you know, additional services around that, based on the size and scope of your population and the needs and the demographics, you can add to that. But that core primary care, you know, family medicine providers, you're you're very fortunate to have retained that. Um, I've heard about several small communities that have initiated efforts to build a community health center of their own. And, you know, it's very difficult to do that from scratch. So you had an existing clinic, you were able to retain that, and now as a community, the Community Health Center advances in and enhances that.
Thank you.
I'm just making a short comment. When when we as an affordable housing provider or developer look at housing projects, what's what's happened over the past uh number of years is that um we are looking more, I'm a boomer generation, and a lot of your folks in here too. We look at our designing our our residences with an aging in place factor. And what we found over the years in the smaller communities, there's been a large old variation of the seniors and elders because there's no medical there. So then the small communities are losing their their elder population to urban centers where they have better access to healthcare. So to have a medical facility in town and then along with our project is is going, which is by the way, designed age of place in University Bowl. It will be a benefit to retain retaining the people that are already here that want to stay here. You don't want to have to move to a larger center where where there's better medical care.
I've heard a lot of information on why we need the healing center and needs to be built, but why it has to take up green space at two hundred Maine? Um, I, is there any other location that would suit the center without the loss of green space? Kind of close.
I was at the Legion the other day. I was having a a beverage with Sid Lorrell. And Sid said, Parliament, you played ball hockey on Main Street, you you participated in the Main Street events in the park, and you know the value of two hundred Maine. You were there. And I was there. I was first there in twenty sixteen. And we all remember those glory pre-COVID days, the days we used to get together and there was no masks. Um, why, why is the district adamant at carving up two hundred Maine to afford any development? Doesn't matter if it's a healing center, it's Habitat, any commercial development. And so, you know, Sid gave me a perspective from a a resident's point of view, not understanding why the district would even contemplate ripping up green space. And we don't want to rip up green space. We, there's not one person on council, including myself, that wants to give up any valuable green space. We've got lots of green space in Sycamore, but when you look at downtown, I I know a lady reached out to me and sent me an email saying it's just a special place to go to get away from it all. It's just there. It doesn't have to be busy all the time. It's just there. It takes those beautiful trees. We don't ideally want to rip up any commercial green space or dedicated park space. We're just looking for a home. For all the reasons I said earlier, we're trying to find a way to save both projects. On two hundred Maine, what's being proposed is it's one point five acres. What we're proposing is a low-impact healing center designed by our lead architect that encompasses the area and maintains half of the park, the point seven five acres on the west side, as open community green space. What does that mean? Um, it could be an outdoor skating rink like Stewart Park in Kelowna. It could be trails. It could be just the way it is now, nothing more than a passive setting. What we want to do is incorporate two hundred Maine to be this place where you've got outdoor community space integrated with indoor community space. Because the medical clinic's not going to be an institutional medical clinic, medical clinic like my age group understood it to be, which is institutional cold and not inviting. Why we're excited with Douglas Cardinal is this is a place where people can come in, even if you don't have an appointment, because we want public space. And so we're trying to integrate the design of this building to take advantage of half that park and maintain it as green. But the short, short answer is we'd love to find another spot. I would love to find another spot that showcases this facility. It doesn't cost a lot of money, where we don't have to incur any more debt. We're looking, and council's open to any suggestions. I've been focusing on Finlayson. We're trying to bring this to the downtown for all the reasons we talked about. So we understand the importance of parks. That's my background in my university uh education, parks planning, I get it. I really enjoyed two hundred Maine also. So I I guess what I'm saying is we're trying to incorporate both, minimize the impact of the building, maximize the potential of green space. Go orders, um, don't go vertical, and try to incorporate the indoor-outdoor community space concept against this design.
Okay, we are going to ask this question from somebody online. Why can the residents of Sycamore's expect the D O S to provide up-to-date and independently conducted community impact studies on the loss of our essential community green space and the development of the original healing center in our downtown core? So can we, when can we expect uh up-to-date, independently conducted community impact studies regarding this?
The question's been asked uh before at a council meeting. One of the most pressing issues we know, and there has been an impact study done in terms of a housing needs assessment as affordable attainable housing. And that's what we're doing. Um, two hundred Maine, as everyone knows, the district's been accused of saying it's not a park, it is a park. It has been a place used as a park. We all have used it as a park. When we say it's not a park, we're not saying it's not used as a park. We know it's used as a park. What we're saying is it's a commercial zone property, as per the Local Government Act. It's not in our parks by law. It wasn't purchased in twenty fifteen for that purpose. It was used as a park. What we're trying to do is, again, I don't need to repeat myself with this new facility and keeping the green space. But in terms of the community impact, we know what the impact is if we don't provide housing. That we do know because we have a housing needs assessment going on, and we know there's a tremendous backlog of people looking for housing. That's where our impact focus is right now. We have lots of green space throughout the community, we have a chart that indicates that. We're trying to minimize the impact on two hundred. So we don't believe there's necessary uh time minded to be spent with a consultant telling us how many acres of parkland we have already. We already know that. We know where the bulk of the activity happens, whether it's Beach Park Finlayson or on Main Street. Our impact analysis is on the housing side of the equation. Where do we put the housing and bring in the necessary folks to keep this community going and paying the bills? That's what our focus has been on. Um, in terms of the question to council, will council engage in impact? That's that's a decision council has to take. I've heard it. I'm sure council's heard it, and they will entertain that question. But right now, there are no plans to do a community impact on a parcel that's commercially zoned, used as a park. That's the short answer.
Okay, um, a a statement and then a couple of questions. Uh, when COVID is done, we're really going to need green space. So it's a good thought. And then the follow-up question, the same person asked. Um, in regard to uh five three zero Main Street, uh the Mountain Park Motorsports Building, why did the fellow buy tanks to go in the ground? If he did not have an approval of the development permit? And remember, and then this one too. Why is he applying for, applying for a liquor license next to a high school?
Why is he applying for a liquor license next to the high school? Is he? Not to my knowledge. Scott?
One of the, one of his concept is a restaurant that serves alcohol.
I see. Thank you. So one of the proposed uses in their D P is a is a restaurant with alcohol? Okay. Short answer, it's his risk. If he's buying equipment and tanks and applying for liquor licenses without a development permit, I mean, the development permit is still before council. That's his risk, and he has a right to do that. A lot of developers do that. He's purchased the land. He's got a proposal in front of us. I spent an hour this morning with M O T I talking about the uh the M O T I statutory right-of-way, the district of Sycamore's statutory right-of-way access in and out, traffic flows, queuing, et cetera. Uh, the D P is still before council. It's scheduled to go November tenth, but in terms of he, the developer, incurring costs after repurchase it, but before the issuance of the D P, that's it. It's on risk. There's no exposure to the D O S.
I'll make sure we have some wireless links for a six o'clock drill. This juggling the doctor did not anticipate to be a failure of a microphone.
Steve, do you remember your last question, sir?
I do. First of all, I'd like to thank the table for very lengthy answering some of the questions. I've got some very quick, short answers. The property two hundred Main Street mainly was used for park activities and activities. Was owned by the district.
Yes.
And was advertised as such when it was purchased. Putting through the media and I think the elected mayor at that point made comments towards that.
Yes, and I'd say in fact, I made that comment.
Are we, are we disclosing to the public of this unit that as recent as August eleventh twenty-one, there's been a zoning format being produced by the district, clearly showing that two hundred Main Street is designated as P three park general, first meaning being passed on August eleventh twenty-one.
Yeah. Yes. Ye- yes, um, in the new zoning bylaw, which we're going public consultation prior to meeting with Habitat, that was the plan, Steve. That was the plan.
So that was in August, and then also two.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so we're spending money doing that, we're rezoning, and then we're just making a change if we're going to move the the building that was asked for the grant was two hundred Main Street and the addiction center and everything. Then we switched it to the four hundred block Main Street. And now because Habitat has approached the history, we want to move it to the last remaining, correct me if I'm wrong, green space within the downtown core of Sycamore's.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
It's not an addiction center, Steve. Come on, be fair.
I am being fair.
It's not an addiction center.
It goes hand in hand. You all know that.
It's not an addiction center, sir. All right.
Okay, uh, this is to the gentleman with Habitat. I'd like to comment to some of your answers. Firstly, what Habitat and the district is proposing is called infill construction. Infill construction is commonly known, you take the old houses down, three of them maybe on a big chunk of land, you knock them out. You put in multi, multi housing, higher tax base, more taxation for the district, so on and so forth. Affordable housing. By fifty years in the construction industry, turns into, quote, this is not working. Okay, the slums of tomorrow. And almost every builder that I've worked for in the province of Alberta and British Columbia in the last, almost, not quite, has made those comments. It's about tax base and money moving forward. The downtown core works in Calgary to do infill construction, to remove the old and put up a new. It doesn't work in the town like Sycamore's that has a whole population of two thousand people, rotten dirty, which is five thousand of Alberta taxpayers and grows due to tourism in the summer. It is about location. I'm not against the development. I'm all for development, and I support it. Also, I'd like to ask the gentleman with Habitat, is Habitat planning on tendering these projects, or will they be volunteer-based, just as historical as Habitat? I have been, my background is in the largest construction companies, training contract in the province of Alberta. For many years, thousands of units to Habitat extensively. My question is, will local trades be given opportunities to tender the multifamily and commercial projects on four hundred block and two hundred Main Street if it moves forward with these? For the record, I'm against it, so.
You're against, you were against the housing project?
No, I'm I'm against development. I'm against.
Against development?
No, I'm against location. I made that a difference. Only the location. I have nothing wrong with Habitat. Happy to hear about it. I wish that that would happen. I actually contacted the district for two weeks ago. Okay, development in this town is fantastic. We need housing. We know that. Don't need a downtown, and we don't need a healing center to be proposed. We are the last at this time, attainable green case. My last comment to you is that October fifteenth, council meeting, we, I've written myself specific, we could ask for a proper town hall meeting. We were promised that. It is my opinion, in the many town hall meetings, this is not a proper town hall meeting. Proper town hall meeting is when we all get to speak, not just get ears on the others, from the other side. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, first of all, I've been in the industry as long or longer than you. I started in seventy-five when I fell off of North America. And I would challenge you on your assessment that building a multifamily project in the downtown of of Sycamore's is going to bring in the Chicago slums. I have heard that from NIMBYs in North America in this. I have heard that from NIPs in North America. In this, I worked in the States and Canada. I hear that every time I go to do a project. So without getting along, I drop, I simply don't agree with you. And in the, well, that's a two-way street.
You're insulted.
In the, um, in answer to your question about Habitat, the Habitat model originally was like a finite build program where they built one house at a time as you volunteers. That model has gone away. And yes, all the trades and locals will be given an opportunity to bid, to bid on the work. And provided that they're affordable and they need all the security requirements, we'll trip them in business. We try to bring as much business locally as possible, whether it's a trade, a supplier, a contractor, a service industry, a lumber manufacturer, uh, whatever. First opportunity comes to local community. So that is an integral part of what we do. Uh, we are also licensed and registered general contractor, housing developer. Through V C Housing, insured in the new home warning program. So we have the capacity of building any of this or all of it. But like I said, we will provide the opportunity to all local businesses to participate in the development of this profit.
Yes, it's four forty. So, um, now I've been asked. Since we've asked all the questions that I was given and we've allowed many more, I will ask, um, each of the folks on the panel to give us a short kind of statement.
So for me and my interest is for the health and wellbeing of this community and all of its residents. I think it's paramount to your future to attracting new and emerging young professionals, families. To have some of those things that are requirements when one seeks to either move someplace or stay and put down roots. Without the services of a community health center, it would put really all of your residents at risk. Um, both from a personal health and wellbeing standpoint and from having a robust community. So I I think that's what I take away from this town hall is. Ha, you have an advantage in that you've been able to retain your current medical providers and the support staff around those individuals. Um, being able to develop. Retail, commercial, housing, all of these other amenities in your community makes it an attractive place. Not only for those who live here today, but for those families that that you want coming in and down the road, you want them to stay. Some of them are your own family members. So, oh.
No. I just want to say, look, Habitat Humanity Council is a nonprofit charitable society. We're not here to sell you anything. We have an opportunity in front of us that, uh, and in front of the community and the council. To partner on developing some change in the world. Uh, and a unique project that that we've done is an awful lot of work, uh, for my design efforts. So look at us as an opportunity and we're here to help. I'm not here to sell you anything. We're here to help you get some housing that isn't, is pretty evident needed. It's in the O C P. It's in the, it's in the regional needs analysis and the fund issue of housing needs assessment. We are responding to a need and we are providing an opportunity for this community to meet that need. So look at us as a partner. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Evan, did I just?
Yep, of course.
You, you, uh, Owen, I, you have something you'd like to say?
Thank you. And Steve, I have to say, I don't know who you are, um, but I, I have, I was very offended by your comment about low income housing. We have the Haven that is providing a nice safe home for lots of people in our community. And I guess if you have a society that's not giving it or it can wind up looking like that. So we are a community, a region that's based on many people living below the poverty line. And they need a place to live. And this is an opportunity. I'm not saying that I'm in favor of Habitat for Humanities. Of course, I'm in favor of our project. Uh, you need to recognize that we are not downtown Calgary in this area and low income housing is what we need. And the Haven was built in the early seventies. It stood the test of time and and, um. God willing, we will keep it going to provide safe, quality homes for people for many long lives. I I I could not leave without saying that. I'm sorry you upset me greatly.
You don't have room to respond?
You guys can talk about that later. We have a minute, Steve. Okay.
But what I will say.
Steve, Steve, you can talk a little later, okay? Steve. Hey, Steve. Hey, Steve. Hey, Steve, you, there's a whole park I want to talk later, okay? Thank you. No, I just, I'm not going to repeat a lot of what I said. I I tried to cover as much as I can. Maybe tonight I can talk a little about, about truth reconciliation, clarify some of those questions. You know, to the question about town hall, I believe there's going to be another one. I think there has to be another one. I don't know what the format will be, but we're a small community and we want to get. And this is a very friendly room. Fifty's a perfect number. I think there's going to be more. We still have to design this building. I know council and I have talked about getting some stakeholder and public engagement, working with our tech and design of both projects. We want to make sure it's right for the community. So that's all I'm going to say on that. I could talk for hours. On a lot of these, this is for you folks to ask questions. I believe there's going to be another one. Um, I've been asked, uh, by the mayor if he would like to say a few words. So Terry?
First off, I want to thank you all for coming and joining us at the town hall meeting. I certainly want to thank the panel, Veen, um, and Evan and Bill. I hope that they've, uh, clarified and answered some of your questions. So when it comes to the attainable housing side of it and of course the medical center. And I want to just make this comment on behalf of council. Very, very tough decisions to make. As we purchased the medical clinic in order to keep. The doctors here in this town. We also have to fight hard in order to keep Parksville Elementary open here a few years back because the school district was going to close down our elementary school. One of the biggest issues that we have here in this community. Is these challenges. And as I look around this room today. I don't see very many young people. And the importance of bringing young people into this community is our future. And how do we bring the young people into this community? When we're looking at something like fiber optics right now to bring the tech sector here and create some sort of economic development for this community and encourage young people to come to our community. Because the young people are our future. So we have to consider some of these particular projects and how important they are and how difficult it has been for. Council in order to make the decisions on the property that we have and that we can actually have purchased and we're able and afford and could afford to purchase this land and. We're basically at the end of our rope with it. And so we have basically three major projects. We have been given ten million dollars from, uh, different levels of government in order to. Perform and bring these projects to fruition. Yes, it's difficult. Talk about two hundred Main Street. I didn't call it a park when we were having, um, Canada Day a few years ago and nobody enjoys playing ball hockey more than I do. And what was able to. Represent at a certain time. But right now, we're using it maybe for maybe two weeks, three weeks, four weeks of the year. You have to give us the opportunity to give you what we're planning on putting onto that particular piece of property. When the architect does the, the, uh, the concept design for, Veen's been part of this and she's totally comfortable with what we're going to see. Green space. How important is it to the community? Absolutely essential. We have a lot of green space in this community already with Finnlessen, Beach Park, and so forth, Old Town Bay and, uh. And we know how important that green space is, but part of the development back of Habitat Humanity and with Eagle Valley Housing Society. Is we want to put an area in there of green space for the community. We want to combine the, uh, medical center, uh, with green space. So I can understand your concern when it comes to green space because, uh, it's legitimate. We only have so many options in Ohio and what we can do. Council. Right from the very get-go, have been fighting desperately to keep medical care in this community. We went on a limb. We bought the medical clinic. We bought the B Stone building. Doctor Beach was going to retire. We've now got, and we've gone through some options. We now have three different doctors working and we're taking a look at something that happened in. Chatham, British Columbia, several years ago, did not have any doctors. They could not convince a doctor to come to their community. So the council has dated this. They decided to build a medical clinic. No doctors. None. They went on a limb, they got off the lands and they built the medical clinic. And within two years, they had five doctors in a brand new facility working for their community within the District of Chatham. That's a prime example of what you have to go through when you're trying to keep your medical, uh, the medical, um, professionals in line. And it's not just about doctors. It's about massage therapists. It's about what being said, you know, it's a combination of, of, of the importance. Of this particular clinic coming to Sycamore. And could we build it somewhere else in the community? If we could afford to build it somewhere else in the community, we would. What we could do is this. We could do this. We could earn, or we could arrange to have the money to buy different properties. But we would have to sell two hundred main in order to do it. Who would we sell it to? Would we sell it to a developer? What would they do with it? Would you rather see a medical clinic there with some green space and have it come so that it's beneficial to your community? I don't want to use the word change. It's not about change. It's about progression. And it's about benefits to the community. I think that this council has asked, and I, I, has answered a lot of questions. I really have to, uh, give them a lot of praise for what they've done for the community and for the town hall. And we're going to go into the next town hall. But at the end of the day. Community's choice. Anyway, thank you and thank you for being here and thanks to the panel. And, uh, let's look forward to the next meeting at six o'clock.
So, um, folks, you've, uh, you've got. A chance now to grab post-it notes or blank pieces of paper here. There's more questions you can ask and go in that box. More coming in online that we will continue to answer. And as Mr. Parlin said, you're going to have chances at future town halls as well. This is just the beginning and, uh, so you're going to have a chance to get all your questions answered. And we'll make sure we do that. So for now, we'll, we'll wrap it up. I'm going to go home, let the dogs out because I left at seven thirty this morning and I'm going to go, um, let the dogs out and come back. Fix up some wireless lines for the next crowd. So keep your talks going out in the parking lot and, uh, thank you to the senior center for hosting us today.